I'd like to call to order this June 9, 2025 Chester Public School Board Work Session. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Bratton?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Dr. Pierce and Donald?
Here.
Mr. Rockford?
Yes.
Ms. Burrow?
Here.
Dr. Kennedy?
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, did anybody sign up to address the board this evening?
No, Mr. Chen.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who did not get a chance to sign up? And would I go to the board this evening? Here anyone? Oh, yes?
I don't want to speak.
Sure. Oh, you don't want to speak? Oh, okay. All right. Moving forward then, consent agenda. This includes the approval of the consent agenda items, the agenda in the minutes.
Motion to approve consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ireland.
Second.
Second by Ms. Burrow. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Consent agenda is adopted. Reports and presentations, I believe Ms. Bratton and Mr. Donald giving us the athletics and club report?
Ms. Donald, I'm going to give her first.
Okay.
Is it here? Yes. How's everybody doing? All right. I'm Beth McDonald, the principal, Daniel Morgan. This is David Scott, the assistant principal. Mr. Hauser is not here. He's out of town on vacation. And Mr. Moore, our other assistant principal, is back in case we have any questions. We're going to start off, actually, Mr. Scott's supposed to start off, talking about our athletics and sports at Daniel Morgan.
Oh, man, I'm going to struggle to read that. Um, okay, so first off, we just kind of wanted to let you guys know what activities we do offer. In the fall, we have girls' basketball, football cheerleading, and cross-country. Winter, boys' basketball, wrestling cheerleading again, and volleyball. And then in the spring, outdoor track and field. The JV opportunities that we have, kids that travel up to Hanley to participate are girls' basketball in the winter, indoor track and field in the winter, baseball, tennis, and soccer, which is a great opportunity for our creators to be able to participate at the high school level. The clubs and activities that we currently sponsor are forensics, math counts, robotics, SGA, Student Government Association, drama, and more musical. Our drama productions are great. I encourage you guys to come out and see them, especially this spring. Musical is always a good one. Choir, band, United Sound, Color Guard, and we do have a soccer club. We do struggle to find coverage for these sponsors, so we're always trying to recruit teachers and other people to come in and provide more activities in the form of clubs. You can see our participation numbers here sort of reflect the lack of people that we have to cover certain things, such as math count and robotics. But when we do have somebody that's on staff that covers the ones that you see here, drama, choir, band, they are much more attended by students. Something we've talked about currently is how many kids we have in the soccer club and are looking for a sponsor for that currently. That's one of our most highly-attended activities for students. Here you can see our participation rates. Two hundred and seventy-two students turned in completed physicals, but you can see the numbers here of kids that participated from grade levels. So we do have fifth graders participating, and then we're hoping to have sixth graders participate a little bit more next year, and then our numbers in seventh and eighth grade. So pretty consistent across seventh and eighth graders for participation rates. It is nice being in one building to be able to get the younger kids involved, whether that's as like a manager or just practicing with the team. Two hundred and forty-seven athletic participants during the year. So that is duplicated kids. It doesn't mean that that's one-for-one. That's kids that participated in multiple activities. Here's the participation numbers by activity. I won't go down through all of them for you, but just kind of some numbers that stand out. Sixty kids for outdoor track and field, which is a huge number. And then obviously, football is pretty high as well. But that's spring sport because it's the only thing we have is very highly participated in. Achievements this year, our seventh-grade girls' basketball team was NBA champions. Girls' cross-country, boys' cross-country, eighth-grade volleyball, seventh-grade boys' basketball and track and field. Sorry. This year, eighth-grade volleyball, seventh-grade boys' basketball, track and field. Last year, for the calendar year, not the school year, boys' cross-country, girls' cross-country, and seventh-grade girls' basketball.
All right, so we gave a survey to all of our students. We did give it during school time, so it is representative of our entire school community. And so about fifty percent of students reported participating in an activity or a club. Those that chose not to, as you can see here, are the top reasons they weren't interested in doing so. They liked to do other activities. You do have some that did not make the team, and we do make cuts on some of our teams, that like our basketball team, our volleyball team. Those are two teams that we do have to make cuts on, as well as our cheer squad. So sixty-six percent of our kids said that they were satisfied with the offerings for our clubs and activities. We also acquired what they would like to see. The top thing is soccer, as we shared. So that is going to be a stipulated club position this coming year. So that's something that we're kind of going to change, hope to have some leadership in that area to get more kids involved and do have some internal tournaments and whatnot. Swimming, tennis, baseball, softball, esports, lacrosse, and the dance team were our top ones. So definitely some interest in some different things here. As far as parents go, we didn't have a lot of parents answer, about eighty families answered. So they said that they were seventy-two percent favorably responding to the offerings that we currently have. Overall, the quality was seventy-six percent. They were satisfied with the communication from athletics, and they were satisfied with our fields and the availability of our uniforms, eighty-three percent here. Some things that they did mention, they would like more opportunities for clubs and athletic activities, and then an increase in communication about clubs and activities. And I agree with that. That's not something we advertise as well as our athletics. And part of that is just because we have such a limited amount of clubs. So we are always kind of looking for more things to offer and more people to sponsor those. As far as expenditures go, you can take a look here and see that our uniforms and apparel on our five-year rotation for each sport, we just purchased new football equipment this year. So that was a more pricey group of things to purchase. But spent $10,000 on apparel this year to replace our football uniforms mostly. This is for transportation expenditures. It's missing the end of the school year because it's kind of always a month behind. But we did spend about $5,000 on drivers and fuel, $15,000 on equipment. We did purchase some larger items. We had a little more in this fund than we typically do this year. So we got a new scorer table and wall mats for the gym. So it's going to look very nice, I believe. And then a lot of our money, of course, is spent on people, which is the way it should be, right? So we've got fourteen head coach positions. We did add some assistant coach positions this year. We do want to make sure that we have a coach, a head coach and an assistant coach for each sport, just so that we have coverage in case someone's sick or out or whatever. So we did add a couple of positions. That was all paid for through our funding for athletics already. So we just kind of move different athletics funding around. We do hire, of course, people to do ticket-taking and concessions. So we spent $5,000 on that. And then, of course, referees is another expenditure for $13,000. Looking ahead for us, we are getting new wrestling mats this year. So that's exciting. We're actually going to move the wrestling room to a different location and have a more, I guess visually appealing and hopefully useful wrestling room. Something that our athletic director is always asking about and wants to have as a medical trainer and practices in games. Something that he's always kind of thinking about. We went to the soccer team a couple of times, and then our PTO was really interested in raising money for a concession stand and bathrooms. So that's something that we're looking into as well. That's it for Daniel Morgan. Does anyone have any questions or anything before we leave?
I have a couple of questions. Thanks for coming to present, appreciate it.
Sure.
With respect to soccer, it might be a good example. What would be the difference between a JV soccer team and then like a club soccer team? And then if it was a fall or winter or spring sport? What's the difference between those three categories?
Just got to continue that one.
So JV would be our eighth graders that were able to participate and try out for the Hanley team?
So it's like a tryout-based?
Yes. Which, if we're talking about a team from our school, the benefit for us would be that most of those kids would probably, well, we would definitely have more kids make the team. A lot of the experience for our eighth graders right now is they get a physical and pay for it. And then there's not that many kids that are kept on the JV team. So that's kind of their first experience with sports. We would love to be able to have a seventh and an eighth grade team so that the kids can, you know, make a team the first time instead of being cut. And that's just the nature of an eighth grader trying out for a JV sport. So if we had a running team, it would be housing our area. Our belief is that we would like to do it aligned with what high school is. That way you can have kids that still participate in all the sports as they would for a VHSL sport. So you know, if you have a kid that plays football or does fall cheer, they're able to do soccer just as they would in high school, so to be aligned with that. So that's why the spring season would be the best for a soccer team in the middle school.
Oh, okay. Cool. So would the soccer team, if you made it a, you said a spring sport?
That's correct.
Would it be tryout-based, where the club is not tryout-based, or?
Yeah, so a club is pretty much based on, you know, any kid can show up that's in good standing academically and behaviorally.
Yeah.
But a team would be limited number of participants and actually have a scheduled games and so on. Right now, they're just, it's basically intermurals. They play against each other.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. David, do you know if there's any other school divisions in our immediate area that have soccer in middle school?
Private schools.
Private schools. And how many games could we get if we had our own soccer team?
That's hypothetic. I would love to say that if we kind of piloted this, that you would see potentially the county schools follow. I think that that's sort of the mindset right now is that there's not enough teams to play. But I think, you know, we've got to kind of get creative with that. I think that, from what I've heard, and I might be speaking in a lot of terms, private schools have a female season on one side and then a male season on another, which would make it a challenge. But I think we got to, if it's something that's important to us here, because I believe our participation levels would be extremely high, we put it together and try to find as much as we can others with all the soccer.
And I assume that there would be some type of, like, we would want to, I don't know how to say this, but the travel teams right now are structured, or their seasons are structured in such a way that they go up through like eighth grade playing both fall and, what is it, spring? So if we were to implement a soccer team at Daniel Morgan, they would probably lose one of those.
They could, but also, I believe that we're targeting kids that aren't necessarily on travel teams.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Yeah. Our goal is to get kids that this would be their experience with organized society.
I was going to say, with that participation in the club sport, I think it's clear that it's a necessity at Daniel Morgan.
Yes, and I would venture to say that most of our kids that go to the club are not on travel teams. That's their soccer. That's their weekly.
Right. Can I ask, I guess, we're feeding children into Hanley. So what does collaboration between, and this might be for Mr. Prosser as well, what does collaboration between Hanley's coaching staff and Daniel Morgan look like? You know, considering like this is kind of preparing the next class of athletes?
I don't want to speak for Reed, but I think it varies from team to team and coach to coach. It depends on what their vision is for their program. So, yeah, it's not standard across all sports.
I think that would be nice to see, for sure. But I think we would have a really competitive varsity if we started kind of just having something put on at that age.
Any other questions for? Do you know, does Fox here have baseball and softball in their school?
I don't know.
My big takeaway, guys, is the gaping hole in the spring. I agree. Seeing it in that format, you're kind of, wow. And then see, obviously, kids are wanting to participate, which is great. And to have such, I'm glad you're going to sleep in the soccer club team. I think that's helpful. We need to make sure our kids are actively out there. Good job.
We do have kids who want to participate in the spring and summer.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
And, I'm sorry, you guys can go. On this slide here, that, just correct me if I'm wrong, the new wrestling room is happening. But the other three are not, they're like wants, they're like wishes.
That's correct.
Okay. So right now, you do not have a medical trainer at Daniel Morgan. And you want concession stands, you want soccer.
Good evening. Mr. Prosser and I are going to present this collaboratively. He's going to start us off and give us an overview of the athletics and activities at John Hanley High School.
Great. The, just real quick, we offer a little bit more than Daniel Morgan does. These are all Virginia High School League sports. Virginia High School League is effectively our governing body. It's the NCAA, for lack of a better term. And so all of these are VHSL sports. We've got a total of about twenty-two, twenty-three sports. And we have a nice array that allows a lot of our kids to find a home. We'll get to this, but we have basically over a third of our student population is participating in athletics. And then when we get to the clubs, we have basically half of our student population that is a member of a club. So if you want to go ahead and scroll down, we have, these are the clubs that we have. Again, like David alluded to, finding a sponsor is always a tricky situation. Currently, we're looking for two sponsors. So if anybody wants to do key club or robotics, let me know.
We got robotics.
Oh, good. That's excellent. We just got robotics today. But what we try to do is, our philosophy is, we want to have our kids be attached to schools. And if you are participating in something beyond the school day, you're going to be more successful, or you're likely to be more successful, and be attached to the school. So we really try to go out of our way to make sure that the kids are involved in either athletics, clubs, band, chorus. And if you'll note on that, I know it's, the Virginia High School League also sponsors esports, One Act Way, which is drama, robotics, forensics, debate. So those are actual VHSL activities where they can compete for state championship. We're very successful in forensics, and kids have done a great job. We're kind of new to the table with robotics, and the kids have done a great job, and it's flying. But the problem is, we're dealing with a lot of schools that they're sponsored by McDonald Douglas, or they're sponsored, sponsored by Northern Virginia, Northrop Grumman, or something like that. So, but the kids have done a great job, and that's something that we implemented through Dr. Van Buculon's leadership about four, five years ago, and it's taken off. It's done a really good job. Esports has done well as well also. And appreciate Aaron's help trying to get through the VHS, or the WPS firewall so we can actually play using our systems and not screw up what we're going there. If you scroll down a little bit more, the participation numbers, we have a total participation in clubs and sports is eight thirty-one. We're talking about our student population is usually around thirteen thirty, thirteen fifty. And so that's a pretty good percentage that I'm proud of, and I know Susan's proud of as well. The total number of student athletes are four fifty-one. That is not counting duplicates. So if you have a kid that's a multi-sport athlete, they are not counted twice. We have four hundred and fifty-one student athletes that play a variety of sports. The total number of athletes in clubs is two forty-nine. The total number of clubs we have, as you saw, is twenty-eight. Participation in clubs is six twenty-nine. I would anticipate that to continue to rise. There's a really good push at ninth-grade level to make sure that the kids are involved in at least one extracurricular. We have a couple of people that are mavens that do a great job of hearting people in. Val, being one with our drama department, so Keith, she does a spectacular job of getting kids involved in the play. And even if it's just a cameo like, hey, just come and hold a flag and walk across the stage. So we am really proud of our coaches, our sponsors, our teachers, of trying to get our kids actively engaged. That's a pretty good number for a school our size, and it's a tremendous amount of participation. The other thing that we've been able to do also is we've been able to implement a free tuition, or not free tuition, free admission program for our athletic events. So if you're a WPS high, or excuse me, if you're a John Hanley High School student, you do not have to pay to get into our athletic events. And that has been, I think that's been a great program that's really increased participation in terms of game attendance, school spirit, things of that nature. Obviously, it helps that we're pretty good at a couple of sports. Well, we're pretty good at a lot of stuff. But I'm just trying to be humble and make sure that, you know, if you're attached to a winning program, people want to be involved with it. But it's also good that we've removed a hurdle for people to be involved. So I'm really excited about that as well. If you scroll down a little bit more.
This is a good moment to plug the win at Soccer Game tomorrow.
Yes. You on the internet, 3:00 PM, John Hanley High School, the Hanley Board. Let's go. Tickets are available on GoFan, and you can also use credit card or Apple Pay at the gate, so.
And check out what they're so excited for.
But yeah, the, we just, some of the, when we get to the accolades, some of them are updated because we just won the region championship on Friday, and we'll be hosting a state playoff game on Tuesday. So certainly excited about that. Just sort of, so you kind of understand where we are. We have more expenses, obviously, than the middle school. Our uniforms are a four-year rotational cycle. The intent of that is to make sure that if you have attended John Hanley High School, you will be wearing a new uniform at one point in your career. If we were a five-year cycle, there's a feasibility where a kid could not get a new uniform. So that's something we try to do. It's a four-year rotational cycle. The facility improvements, like a lot of the times, we're constantly trying to improve our facilities. Just for example, last year, we installed a new speaker stadium, or new speaker system in the gym and in the football stadium. Those were ongoing projects that we were able to get. A new waiting room floor was installed a year or two ago. Last summer, we painted the gym, and I don't think that had been painted since renovation, to be honest with you. And then wrestling is a popular need, so we too are trying to get a new wrestling mat as well. And what's a little different with us is there's really no governing body in middle school, so we have to pay a VHSL membership due. I believe you guys actually approved that last meeting. And then we have equipment replacement and reconditioning yearly. We're always trying to upgrade. We always hustle. We always try to make sure that any money that's spent in the athletic department is going to benefit the kids. And as Dr. Van Buculon alludes, it only takes a little bit more to be first class. And so I'm proud of what we're able to do to provide for our students. Our goal is for all the other schools to go, why can't we have that? Or why can't we look like that? So all of our uniforms are always name-brand, whether it be Nike, Diaz, Under Armour. We always try to get, I mean, we're not fiscally irresponsible for any stretch, but we do want to make sure that we're getting an elite level of stuff so that our kids, A, are safe. Because if you buy equipment that's maybe not the best, like, we don't want to do that. We want to make sure that we're not scrambled around to having no volleyballs, or having no basketballs, or we're looking for tennis balls. Like, we always want to make sure our kids are provided with the best. And WPS does a great job in helping us do that. The other thing that I would like to say too, that I really appreciate your leadership, is we are the only school system around the area that does not charge athletes to play varsity sports. We firmly, all three of us firmly agree on that. That, to me, that is a non-negotiable. When we start charging kids seventy-five, a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars to play a season, like, that's not, why are we here? You know, if we need more money, then I'll hustle more at the ticket gate to get more people to come to our games. Our job is to provide our kids opportunities, and that's what we want to make sure we're doing. Just to brag on us some, we have four individual state champions thus far. That changed. We had two this weekend in the state track meet. We have, we're over now, twenty athletes earning all-state honors. Boys' basketball team is the region four D champion. You could add our girls' soccer team to the list, where the Hoopsie was a state, or a final four in the state tournament. Girls' soccer region D championship. Cross-country and boys' basketball qualified for the state tournament as well, so you can add the girls to that. So we had three of our team sports qualify for the state tournament. Our boys' track team just finished third in the state at the meet this weekend. So that's four of our teams that are doing very, very well at the state level. And nine sports teams qualified for the region tournament overall. Some of the teams aren't necessarily team qualifications, i.e. track, or wrestling, or swim, where it's more of an individual platform. We have, currently, we have twenty-nine athletes that are participating in college, eight at the Division One level. We have ten senior athletes from this year's class that are continuing to participate at collegiate level. We have six underclassmen currently holding Division One scholarship offers. And so that's one thing that, again, that I'm proud of, is our coaches do a really good job of providing our kids opportunities through their relationships with colleges, through marketing, in terms of getting their film out, developing, you know, information. That I'm really proud of what we're doing. If you want to play in college, you need to come to Hanley High School. That, we do a really good job of getting our kids exposure. We do a really good job of being professional in terms of getting the kids, the college coaches the information they need and the communication that our coaches have with them. So we're really excited about what we're doing so far and proud of the support that WPS gives us because we would not be able to accomplish this without you guys making sure that not only athletics, but activities are valued in WPS, because I feel like they are, and you can't say that in every system.
In our student survey results, about sixty-four percent of students reported participating in a club or activity. Reasons students reported they did not participate, they were not interested in doing so, was about seventeen percent. They preferred other activities was six percent. Scheduling conflicts was eleven percent. They did not know how to join was seven percent. Transportation issues was seven percent, and did not make the athletic team was ten percent. When asked if they were satisfied with the offerings for clubs and activities and athletics at JHHS, fifty-nine percent stated that they were. The following are athletic opportunities or clubs that students would like to see offered: lacrosse, pickleball or badminton, hockey, bike club, or a bike team, a dance team, and boys' volleyball. In our parent survey results, when asked how satisfied they were with the variety of athletics and clubs offered, seventy-eight percent responded favorably. About eighty-eight percent of parents reported they have a student or students participating in a club or activity. Reasons parents reported their students did not participate. Twenty percent said they were not interested in doing so. Ten percent preferred other activities. Thirteen percent was scheduling conflicts, and eight percent did not know how to. And when asked for open feedback, and common threads included, more information on how to sign up, better equipment, communication on signup tryouts, consistent information from coaches to parents, structured offseason training, what clubs are available for students to sign up, maybe having a club day to share information, and transportation for practices for golf. Softball and lacrosse were common threads, offering more opportunities such as other athletic teams in a variety of clubs, additional clubs or sports such as future farmers, photography, and pickleball.
Susan, we offer softball, don't we?
Yes. Yes. And we also do multiple club players throughout the year and really push out about what we offer. So that is done at the beginning of the year. We're talking this coming year about doing it at our PBIS events, like, doing a separate area. But we really do try to push out what we offer and how to sign up for that. So that is something we do our best to consistently push out there as well.
So when this says common threads include softball and lacrosse, what are they saying about softball?
They were just wanting to, information about it. I think wanting to know how to join. Was a big one was the communication for that. And we do put that information out there, but we certainly can be more robust.
You can always, we can always get better.
Yeah. And putting it out there in multiple avenues too is something we always try to do because we were talking today, people look at different things, you know, for their, like, on social media, some are Instagram, some are Facebook. So we've got to make sure that we put that out there on every team that we go on.
And the other thing that is always important is if you're able to have coaches in the building, there, it's helpful because there's an actual point of contact as opposed to coaches that are out of the building. I mean, the reality is, we're not going to be able to have one-hundred percent of our coaches in the building. That's just, that's just not going to happen. But if we can try to do our best to make sure there's always at least one coach on staff that's in the building, that's usually very helpful.
Susan, your student survey results show fifty-nine percent satisfaction with the offerings for club and athletics. Kind of surprised that that number isn't higher. Any feedback from that? And looking at the student survey results of what they would like to see, and the largest number there is lacrosse. I mean, has there been any movement whatsoever towards the possibility of a lacrosse team in Hanley?
I mean, we're always interested in trying to provide for our kids. The reality of the situation is, the lacrosse team that did participate in the club side, last year they had, I don't know what their numbers were like this year, but the total roster was eighty-eight people, and of the eighty-eight, eleven of them were WPS kids. So elevens, it's tough. Now, you know, I don't want to speak for Dr. Van Buculon, but, you know, if it ultimately gets to the point where we have enough interest, it's, I mean, we would love to be able to, you know, just grow in terms of that and our offerings with the kids. Now, logistically, we do have field issues and where you can practice, and then it begins, brings the trainer. So there are, there's apples and oranges, really. There's two separate issues.
I think it's not that we're not interested in that. We want to have as many opportunities for our students. You know, I was surprised to see how high that was, quite frankly. There were only eleven kids that were actually playing in on the club team. So, you know, that's certainly something to explore. Now, remember, when you open a sport like.
Now, remember when you open a sport like lacrosse, A, unfortunately it's in the spring. So you got four soccer teams, you got track and field, um, you would, and then you have, you have, if you're going to open boys' lacrosse, you got to open girls' lacrosse, right? And so, um, you got to make sure that you're ready to go all in with that. Now, with some of the future opportunities for Hanley, that we, you know, read about in the paper from, uh, generous donation of a, a citizen here, you know, that can we get to a place where we have field space to really make that viable? Maybe, I'd love to, I, I prefer Rouse, too, New York, which, we, we played lacrosse all the time. Lacrosse is a great sport.
And, and I do think it's important to note too, our survey went out graduation season, there's a whole bunch of events going on. We, we didn't get as many responses as I would like, this reflects what we did. Um, so I just want to give a number like, and, and I didn't break them down, female or male, but when you're talking lacrosse, it was fifteen, we had a total of fifteen responses for that. So I just want to, and that might paint a better picture, um, with the data for you all, just to know that.
It's not a percentage of thirteen-hundred people.
Right. Yeah, so I would have liked to, like I said, we pushed it out multiple times, but, you know, that's the response we got.
Fifteen kids represents twenty-one percent of the total.
Yes, correct, correct. Yeah. Yeah.
That's very important.
Yes.
If I can say, um, first of all, I love that the varsity sports are free because I think I hundred percent agree that that is, that should not be a barrier for somebody participating in sports. Huge advocate for sports, all my kids play sports. My youngest, you'll see him in like ten, ten years-ish.
I'll probably be retired by then, but that's, I'll come watch.
You'll come watch him. But, um, again, my question, just if you can answer the participation with varsity coaches in middle school, just because middle school is directly feeding into Hanley.
What, what we try to do is, is we try to have our coaches be in contact with, if there is a direct link, like football, football, basketball, basketball, volleyball, volleyball, um, you know, other sports that, that connect. What we try to do is we try to get them on the same page. So at least a lot of the terminology is familiar, the, the, because there's, you, you don't want somebody using this verbiage and then they get to us and it's a different verbiage. Um, and it's, it's a little bit more difficult in that regard. Um, sometimes it's able to, able to be a really collaborative deal. I know a lot of our coaches always go over to the middle school and are at middle school games just so they can at least watch the kids. Uh, we've got volleyball camp going on right now, basketball camp going on right now. So we always try to connect with the kids. Um, and then the other thing we do is if, if Daniel Morgan has a successful team, we try to bring them and have them introduced at one of our games, uh, just so they could be recognized and feel like that we are. The, the one benefit that I think our, our system has is if you're going to Danny Morgan, you're going to Hanley. And it's not like the school's getting split, so if you're a rifleman, you're going to be a judge. And so the fact that we're linear is very, very beneficial to us as, as, as an entire system.
I agree. That's good to hear.
I have two. Anybody else have questions? Uh, Reeve, can you speak to two things, the, the support of J A A?
Absolutely.
And then also, uh, there's whisperings of, uh, like football and golf, or something else?
Correct. Um, the Judges Athletic Association is our founding, um, booster club, for lack of a better term, and they've been around for, geez, since nineteen fifty-some. And they have done a tremendous job, uh, supporting us. Uh, they, they do it through several avenues. Uh, one is just the support they have at games and being pro Hanley. Uh, our students, they give our students athletic, uh, not athletic scholarships, but college scholarships. This year they gave over seventy thousand dollars to our student athletes, um, and so they could help them go to, go to college, whether it be a thousand or two thousand or three thousand. Uh, so it's a wonderful opportunity. They also help us each year, equipment-wise, with roughly around twenty thousand dollars, uh, or maybe twenty-five depending. They also contributed to the, the, um, the renovation of the track, so they gave us seventy-five thousand dollars towards that so we could make sure that we had the, the premier surface that we had a couple of years ago. So we could place, replace premier with premier as opposed to try to take a step back. I mean, we, we have the best track in, in, in Virginia, a, a public high school, hands down, not even close, and probably, I would say, dang on near the East Coast. Uh, we have a wonderful, wonderful, uh, place. Um, but the J A A is, is such a great organization, not only through the support financially, but just in the community. Um, this place is different. It, it, I, I know I'm drinking the Kool-Aid and, and I work here and all that, but like this place is different. It, it, it just is. Uh, I've never seen a high school that had a college alumni feel to it. Uh, people are amazingly proud to be a part of Hanley High School and, uh, we're just fortunate. I mean, I was class of ninety-one, so I get it, hook, line, and sinker all the way, but it, it's true. Um, I've been fortunate enough to be at a couple of different systems as a, as an educator, a football coach, and like this place is special. Um, not only just the beauty of the facade of the school, but the support of the community, the support of the, the Winchester Public School System and like what we are. So it's, I mean, Hanley pride's real, man. It's real, I'm telling you.
Flag football.
Oh, yes, sir. Um, yeah, flag football is, um, we're partnering with, um, Under Armour Rise, which is a league run by Russ Bolden. Uh, he's been doing it a couple of years, uh, partnering with the park. And so what, what they are doing is they're developing a platform to have, uh, basically house teams. It's a club sport, but like, if, they can, in, they can enroll as, as a Hanley student, enroll as a Millbrook student, enroll as a, a James Wood, or Shirando, or Clark County or whatever. And then, so we will be, um, offering that next year. Uh, there's a meeting actually next Monday and talking about communication, we'll get all of that out. Um, that it will offer our kids an opportunity to participate in that. And then, um, the, the, the growth of flag football is tremendous, or particularly for girls' flag football. And so that's, that's what we, we would like to be a part of, just to offer our kids more opportunities as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Appreciate you so much. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, this is your presentation. You start.
Yeah, I'm very thankful.
Thank you, Matt.
State of the Union.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Next, we're going to welcome up Dr. Esteban. Tell us about the Valley Health Clinic.
I'm going to take just a few minutes to tell you about a new collaboration that we have with Valley Health. I'm sure you've already heard. We have a school-based clinic at John Hanley High School, um, which we're very proud and happy to have. The Anse School Clinic started on March twenty, twenty-five, just a few months ago, so I have very limited data to share with you, but nonetheless, it's the end of the year and I wanted to share some numbers with you. Um, Valley Health and Winchester Public Schools have partnered to make healthcare more accessible by bringing video telehealth into our schools. Um, this is available to students and staff, um, and it's accessed via school-based telehealth visits right at Hanley. I don't know if you've been to Hanley lately, but we created an office right near our school nurse, which is convenient. Um, so how does it work? Um, if a student is feeling sick while at school, they visit the school nurse. Uh, the school nurse will then determine if the school, if the student should be referred to the Anse Valley Health Clinic. If so, the nurse will call, contact the parents and get permission first, verbal permission, and then the student is sent to the clinic. Um, in the clinic, the Valley Health medical assistant will call the parent or the guardian to collect insurance information and ensure the necessary forms are completed in order to, for the student to receive treatment. The medical assistant will take the student's vitals and do any necessary testing before virtually connecting them with the provider. And the provider can be a nurse practitioner, a physician assistant, or a doctor from Valley Health. I think it's different on different days based on their schedule. Uh, parents can join the visit via telehealth and then the provider may write a prescription if needed to the family's preferred pharmacy. Um, so it's access to all students regardless of their insurance status. Um, some of the conditions treated are asthma, allergies, cough, cold, flu, ear aches, sore throats, fever, headaches, head lice, pink eye, skin irritations, and I'm sure there's more, I just listed some. So we've only had the clinic for three months, um, and I wanted to collect some data on how many visits we've had. In March, twenty-seven students visited the clinic and twenty-nine staff members. In April, thirty-two students and eleven staff members. In May, twenty-one students and eight staff member visits. Um, I spoke with some of the staff at Hanley and our nurse and I, I wanted to know, you know, give me some data points, what are, what are the exciting things? Why is this clinic so good? Why should we continue to have it? And the first thing Mary shared with me was early intervention and treatment of strep throat following a school trip. So shortly after the clinic opened, there was a school trip and some students who were identified with strep throat and because our clinic was able to assist us in the identification process, we were able to also put some preventive steps in motion, um, like wiping down desks, disinfecting more, maybe testing other students who were on that trip as well. Um, another factor is the convenience to employee visits. Staff members are able to visit the clinic and return to the classroom quickly and continue to support staff productivity, where in the past, we would have to get a substitute so the staff member could go see a physician and come back. This way, they go to the clinic and they're back into the classroom. Um, convenient option for parents and guardians, telehealth visits are more efficient, decreasing downtime. In most cases, the child receives a diagnosis without the parent or guardian having to leave work. That's super convenient for work. I know for all of you that are parents, you can see the benefit here. Um, prescriptions are then ordered by the end of the school day. Remove scheduling delays when addressing acute and chronic health needs. Students miss fewer days of schools due to having difficulty scheduling an appointment with their doctor because they can go to the clinic right there. And we are looking forward to doing this again next year. We are in weekly communication with Valley Health to monitor how things are going, to also ask questions on what can we do better, what should we do more of. So I know this is just a little bit of data, but we've only had it for three months and I wanted to share it with you.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what's up there now for the data. I'm, this is going to let it go.
Increase. I think so too. Yeah. And it takes time for, no matter how, in how many ways we send information out, webpage, emails, newsletters, it still takes time for the word to get out, for everyone to know that the service is available.
Right. Just a couple of questions. Number one, uh, comment or, uh, agree, Melissa, I think when we see this roll around next year, especially during winter months, you see March is like coming off the tail end of the sick season, um, where you see a lot more participation. But what are the thoughts of opening this, something like this up, or opening this up to other W P S staff? Like, is it for Hanley or is it just Hanley?
So because this is new to us, we decided that it would be limited to just John Hanley High School. Um, we have discussed what will it look like in future years? How do we provide this to other schools? I think those thoughts have been on the table. We definitely don't have any steps in process.
Right. Just stated an idea. But it is.
No, I think the original vision was to have that in all of our schools, but I do think there's some, um, wait and see right now with Valley Health on their side with Medicaid. And so, um, you know, some of the, um, the patient methods and whatnot. So, um, they're, they're still all in with us on Hanley. I think we'll go through next year with Hanley and maybe, you know, by January, some lots of clarity on whether it's a viable model because, I mean, Valley Health has to say yes. This is good for us too. Um, and then we can look at expanding.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we want to talk with you. Talk to us about the math, math textbook adoption.
Okay, so I do just want to share that there's a little bit, the memo for this reads six through twelve, but then the recommendation reads seven through twelve, and there's a reason for that. That wasn't a typo. Um, the initial, um, investigation into this was to include sixth grade, but there was a little bit of, um, hesitation from the committee on, um, the, the other program. So they want to investigate it a little bit more. And I will say developmentally, sixth grade is very different than seventh. So we wanted to be sure that we adopted a program for them that they feel very comfortable with. So they're still looking at the program. So tonight, the recommendation is for seven, twelve, but we are still considering where we're going to go with sixth grade. So once we decide on that, I'll bring that back to you all. Um, ultimately, the purpose of this textbook ado- adoption was to, um, have vertical alignment for algebra, for the purposes of algebra instruction between the middle school and the high school. Um, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, so I want to share with you all just who is on the committee and you'll see that, um, we have a lot of interest and, um, just shared collaboration in making this decision. You'll see all of our M C Ls participated. We had a robust group from central office. Um, and our process included, um, one-hour presentations from both vendors and our vendors were, um, Kittle and MathSpace. And just to share with you, um, Virginia Law says that if these programs are already approved by the state board, which both programs are, we still need you all to adopt them, adopt our, our recommendation locally. Um, if it, if these, um, if these textbooks were not state board approved, then we would have to go through a similar process to what the state does in terms of just a committee and all the things. And I just wanted you all to know, we're still doing that, very similar to how the state adopted the textbook and establishing a committee, doing a review process, and then making the recommendation. That is not a requirement, um, because they have already been through this process and done at the state level. But what that does do is it release, it exempts us from the Virginia Procurement Act in terms of purchasing, um, when it comes to that. So just so you guys are clear on what is required versus what is not required. Um, we had a rubric, which is in the, uh, I believe on the last page of the slides, you all probably have already looked at that, includes these six indicators. And we just captured, we wanted to capture, um, the thoughts of the room for you all so you could see essentially what the committee felt, what the concerns were and what they liked about both MathSpace and Kittle. And so I will share one big concern for the, and Jake, jump in where you feel fit. Um, one concern was just the alignment to the new standards. You all know we adopted new standards in every content area last year. Um, MathSpace is made specifically for the state of Virginia, so it is aligned to the Virginia standards. Kittle is not. So that was a big, um, a big plus for the committee, just in regards to when they get these textbooks, how much will they have to adapt them to meet our current needs? You all know it all the time, trying to take the lift off of teachers. So essentially, that was a big, um, win for the committee. The other big win was we do use, um, Desmos, which are like built-in calculators. And so one thing that, um, Kittle did not have was the access to Desmos, so the kids would have to essentially flip in and out. And so they're already built in to MathSpace, so that was another big plus for the committee in regard to the discussion. And I failed to just say, Kristin Nicholson, our math supervisor, is sitting in the back of the room and she did lead most of this process. She's not sitting up here, but in case there were really, really any in-depth math questions, we wanted her to be here because she did extensively review both programs. Um, and I know that essentially there were three textbooks that we did look at initially and then one didn't make it, um, pass the initial look for. So yes.
So you'll also see that there's not many names that are typical textbook companies. Um, and mainly that's because they won't do Virginia standards because the, the majority of, um, states are doing Common Core. And so with the majority of those schools and school systems using Common Core, textbooks are kind of looking at like, well, we can do one book that will fit all of these programs in states. So Virginia, like when we, even when we do talk to some of those companies, a lot of times they don't align to where we even, it's even going to be useful for our teachers. And so that's one thing where like not seeing your typical textbook companies, um, they're not on the list.
And so the results, when we did the scoring of the rubric, came out, you know, fairly close. However, um, I, we've already I, we've already talked through the strengths and improvements for each program and they're further identified here. But perhaps the most telling slide was when we asked the committee, if you had to select a textbook today, which one would you choose? It's very clear that they preferred MathSpace over Kittle. And I do know that the committee was very interested. You know, anytime there's something new, there's a little bit of hesitation. We've been using a variety of resources in math, in math classroom for many years now. So we're bringing this to you all because this is going to be our sole resource in the classroom. So that does create a little bit of angst for teaching, teachers that have been using the same resource for years. But because it is the primary resource, we're bringing it to you. That's why we're bringing it. Because supplemental, there's no requirement for that. So this is new to the committee is what I'm trying to get at. And so they first were interested in piloting and then they didn't offer a pilot. So we came back to the table and we said, but why? What's our other option? Because we don't want the other option. So it was only logical to move forward with this particular recommendation.
I was wondering what this pilot purpose in there.
So this, you have a handout in front of you with the entire invoice. So you see that the cost is a hundred and thirty thousand. That's for seven years and we're asking for digital access for both students and staff. And we have to pay by student, which is why you're seeing that particular cost. But that includes professional development and you'll see an AI chatbot, which the committee was very interested in. That gives them immediate access if they have a question or they need to find something. That was something that was very appealing to the committee. It's a, it's a high cost, but we do know that we're going to start seeing that particular item in a lot of our invoices moving forward.
It's pretty much a helper over the shoulder. Like if it notices a kid is having trouble with a problem, it immediately sees, doesn't give them the answer. It recognizes, hey, you're having a problem with this. Do you remember how to do this? And so just those types of things that ultimately is really hard for a classroom teacher to do with twenty-five students, to be able to have that where it's supporting students as they're learning on what they need to be doing. Our teachers were excited about that.
These are just some additional resources for you all. I linked in where they have been already, both texts had already been approved. So you can see what that would look like at the state level. I linked in the rubric that the committee used and then both presentations that we received, so you all can have a in-depth look at those. So in a nutshell, that's what we did. So any questions about that process or the recommendation?
So we, I'm sorry, did we decided to do digital only and not textbook and digital?
Correct.
Is there like a good, obviously it's a good justification. What is the justification?
One of the things that we've noticed over time, especially with those printed textbooks, is within a year or two, they're outdated. Okay. And so with our state, you know, as you've seen in the past few years, standards change and depending on what that crosswalk looks like, it could be, okay, new standards next year, or you have to wait three years. And there's a lull in between the rollover. So with the digital access, it allows us to have, when, and MathSpace in particular being Virginia kind of focused, those changes would be able to happen so we don't have to use outdated material. And that way, our teachers are using material that they need that are within the standards.
Did they make any type of representations about how like, yeah, we kind of update our program, our curriculum based on updates and SOLOs? Or did they tell you anything about that?
Yeah. And well, the state, luckily, the state did that for us. You know, that was kind of one of the things that they haven't typically done or for a while is, you know, it's, if they didn't even meet the guidelines, the state wouldn't even allow us to really, I mean, they'd say good luck. But instead, you know, when you're, when you have a company that's actually gone through and hit all of those standards to their level of what they are wanting, their desires, they allow us to have, you know, saying, yeah, they got the green light. And MathSpace actually was the only one that got a full green light in their presentation. The other one, there were a couple of things that they didn't hit as high a mark for the state committee.
So if there's, say, changes in the curriculum statewide, like next year, they're committed to updating their?
I don't expect it to happen next year, but if anything, it'd just be, you know, updated resources, updated, you know, problems and things like that. And then probably within the next three or four years, if there were changes that would come out of, you know, the region departments or the math section of BDOE, then those would be changed within the program.
So I mean, if this is a seven-year license, that's, that's good value because we'll be adding them someday. Yeah. Thank you.
And I just wanted to share one last thing is that it takes several years to have a successful textbook adoption. So while we do anticipate teachers will, they will use this this year, it may not be 100% of the time as, as they learn more about it and as we provide professional developments. I just wanted the board to know, they will likely use some supplemental resources as we acclimate to the new textbook. We would anticipate the year after next, we'd be using it 100% of the time. But this year, there will be kind of a, a little bit of a honeymoon in terms of usage.
There's a level of anxiety when a teacher has to use a new textbook. I'm dealing with it right now. And you get used to a textbook and it's like your house. You live in it for a while. You know where all the creeps are and textbooks are kind of the same way. And so then when they come in, they're like, all right, we did out there. Textbooks, you're like, oh my God, I know how this one works. I know, you know. So I can see it getting easier as time goes on.
And too, we haven't had one that we've used. So we've used supplemental and I mean, to Kristin's credit, I mean, it's her baby. And so with our K-12 expansion into our, you know, trying, having a vertical alignment with our math programs, really getting our seven through twelve on the same page throughout. They have been, but this will just help support that even more. So when our students are kind of going through, they have the same types of activities and same expectations that are going to be in those classes. So it'll help the teachers, give them some resources and also I think it will help our students too.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
Okay. Still here, Miss Butler?
Jake's gonna join in for this one too. You have a supplemental resource for this as well, the grading guidelines. So about two months ago, we had collected some feedback just from our leadership team, both at the division level and at the school level, particularly grades five through twelve. So Daniel Morgan Campus and John Hanley High School, just in regards to some inconsistencies that we had as it relates to grading practices over the last several years. So Dr. Bula and I started to just do, to collect some information from all three schools. We reviewed it and determined that it was true that we had three different grading practices at three different schools and that we needed to, to work towards more of a consistent approach. So with that, you'll see that whenever you have inconsistency in your buildings, and this is, and it's such a divisive topic, because I would share with you, everybody has an opinion on this. And every, you know, for every person in the room that has one, somebody else feels differently, I'll just share with you and our survey data supports that. It's important to not reinvent the wheel totally and to look at what we can change incrementally over time to support the mission. And you all can see up here what that is. We want our students to have everything they need in order to be productive citizens. And so we defined very quickly that in our survey data, which we'll go over in a minute, that these are the outcomes we wanted to have for twenty-five, twenty-six. Again, just working towards consistency and viability at the school level. So essentially, we sent out a survey and I'll show that, we'll get to that data in just a minute. But we asked our staff members, who is interested in being part of this committee or task force? I'm going to use that name interchangeably. And so everybody here that you see marked yes on the survey, that they wanted to participate on this grading committee because they feel like it's important work. So I just wanted you all to see, we had a large number of people participating. And representation from just about every area, if you will, get particularly what they teach. So the survey results, the first several slides, and this, this presentation is going to go from the what to the how, essentially. So initially, when we embarked upon this, we had included the intermediate school. They're not represented, they're represented in the staff survey data and maybe in some of the family survey data as well. But we determined in the interim that because the state views the intermediate school as an elementary school and this, and the school leadership was very interested in pursuing the elementary standards-based grading, we supported that at the division level. And so we shared five, six will go to standards-based grading. So we excluded them from the committee work because this is more for schools that have a grading scale. And so I just wanted you all to see that they're reflected in the data. There's, that's why we didn't have anybody on the committee. So you'll see that we had, actually shockingly, almost eighty responses for the staff survey. So we did feel like we got a really good picture of grading practices in the school division. But what the staff survey data will show you is just the widespread inconsistency and the reason that this work is important. So what do you typically include in a student's grades? You'll see widespread in terms of behavior, extra credit, participation in particular. Do you allow students to redo or retake assessments? We said sixty-five percent say yes. And what that means is that Jake and I could be teaching the same subject on the same PLC and Jake might allow for students to get a certain grade to retake and I might say no. And so we want our kids to have a very similar experience regardless of what teacher they have. So that, so this data, that's where that becomes concerning. Same thing with, do you allow to submit late or make up work? Some without penalty, some with penalty. So you see how that will impact the students' grades. How often do you grade formative assessments? Now, formative assessments are quick checks, exit tickets, quizzes, we put that in the question. So that might be something they're given weekly at minimum. And then do you collaborate with your PLC? Now, your PLC are your teammates that teach the same content. So what we would, the goal was that PLCs are planning together, identifying assessments together, and they're giving very similar grades in the grade book. So perhaps the most concerning question was, or the most concerning response was that almost half of our teachers are not collaborating with our team in regards to what that looks like.
And just, I could just interject, like, think of seventh grade math. There's six math teachers. So the chances of you getting into that class is one out of six. And if the experience of the student across six different people is vastly different, that's not equitable education. Now, each teacher's going to bring their flair, of course. But this is getting down to some, you know, common things we can say, no, we all do it this way. And we still have room for some individuality, of course, but student A should not have a hundred percent different experience than student B in the same class, right? Same course.
Yeah. And these, I mean, and a number of you have high school students, middle school students that have gone through. And so they, they, students pick up on this, right? In terms of who does late work, who doesn't do late work, who, and regardless of what is happening in the classroom, right? It's more of who can I possibly turn in late work for, or who allows for extra credit, or all of these things mismatched instead of just what is happening in the classroom and what am I going to be assessed for? So it was very telling as Jen and I went through the data that, you know, the consistency among teachers is not there.
And I pulled up some staff survey comments. In large part, they are very interested, you'll see, in just having consistency and viability in the school. You read through all of these comments. And some of them were very specific in regards to how they think we can do it. So you're going to see like widespread feedback on these next couple of slides. But ultimately, one thing that is very clear to us and very clear to the task force when we were working through things is they want consistency and viability. So it comes down to like, we have to make decisions based on a lot of different information. So if you go through these, you'll see that they're looking for minimum number of grades per week, clear and enforced deadlines, non-negotiable within departments. So understanding that high school and middle school are very different. So lots of different feedback they provided to us that we really did take into account as we established the guidelines.
Yeah. And we had activities that are, that was in one of the presentations that you see, but we had made sure to give time to the task force to look at, you know, it wasn't just us giving you three slides of summary, but it was line by line, going through, looking at what each teacher, and some of them were very, you know, because like Jen said at the beginning, this is very, like, people have their own opinions as to what, and school systems across the country always have these conversations about what grading looks like and what it should look like. Schools do as well. So these comments just kind of allowed for our task force to see what really needs to be tackled. Not everything would be solved completely, but just knowing that these are the things that our teachers are thinking about.
Yeah. We embarked upon this, to Jake's point, we, we knew it likely would be impossible to come to a consensus. So we told the task force upfront, they'll be informing us and we'll use all the data and activity over those sessions to develop the guidelines, which we did. Takes opinion out of what was created.
I have a question about one of the staff survey comments bottom of slide nine.
Okay.
The last sentence in that bottom comment really confuses me. Grades should not be attached to behavior unless it is directly skill-based, grades are neutral and pertain to behavior.
Right.
Contradictory.
The way they responded.
So I think.
I think what they meant was. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm reading it like, uh, skill-based. So if I'm in band or a CTE course where behavior and participation is different, that's where that is looking at in terms of if that's graded as opposed to in a typical academic classroom.
I can see grammatically how it's confusing though.
That's the only way I can think about it.
Yes, I understand.
Whatever. Should not be attached to behavior, grades are.
Yeah. Cause I have a kid in band. So like, she's graded for concerts and marching. So maybe that's what they're talking about, the neutral grades, like those are marks pertaining to behavior by showing up for the concert or.
That's when participation would be appropriate. Yeah.
So I don't know if that helped, but.
I understand what you're saying.
This is a really long comment, but I thought it was valuable. They gave a lot of feedback here and not yet. It's a, I mean, this is really collectively everything we worked through.
And, and this comment in particular, one of the things that we started both of our task force meetings was with, is this is about students. We are doing this for students. And having, and sometimes that's hard as educators, you know, because you think about what do I like to do, right? And how do I like to do this? And so we always tried to bring it back to, we have to be thinking about students and how this is going to benefit student learning. And, you know, we talk about accountability and growth and things like that. But really what it comes down to, like this person is like, kids need to know what their grades are. We need to be able to tell them what their grades are and kids need to be able to share what their grades are. And if they're still demonstrating some mastery and they may not be high, you know, just blowing everything out of the water, there still needs to be a level of showing that students are successful. And so this kind of captures a little bit of, you know, it's not easy to talk about grading, but it's all easy for everyone in that task force to say, this has to be for students. And, you know, whatever we collectively come up with, it's got to be about what's best for our kids.
I appreciate that. There's so many variables in the large umbrella of what grading is. There's, there's a debate over should formative assessment ever be graded? Because you are simply assessing, you know, a student's movement toward mastery. That shouldn't be an A or a B grade. That should be he or she is, is moving towards mastery, you know. So there's so many different variables in the large umbrella conversation of grading. I appreciate you guys doing this work because I don't want to say it's a lose-lose, but you know what I mean?
Well, we want to go slowly, go fast.
And you're never gonna, there's always going to be somebody who dislikes with your, whatever conclusion you came up with.
Well, that's why we think a pilot year. So we were very transparent about this will be a pilot year. We're going to monitor this very closely and we are not opposed to revising it at the end of next year with full implementation to start at the end of the following year. That would be twenty-six, twenty-seven. Well, math is correct. So, so to your point, we just want to make sure we're doing this very carefully and not just, we know where we are currently in both schools and we just think a whole overhaul right now is not best practice. So, and we'll talk you through exactly, once we get through the data, where we're, where we're going to go. But these are family survey results. But these are family survey results, and though we only had thirty-eight responses, we do think it is reflective of how our families feel about our grading practices. And you're going to see that these pie charts are multiple colors, which shows, again, inconsistency in the communication and the interpretation of our grading practices in regards to how our families are feeling.
And I would say probably sixty, maybe even seventy percent of our task force has kids.
Has kids, yes.
In our system.
I'd say more than that, yeah. So they've had those parent experience and the teacher experience. How clear, and this one is good. How clear is the connection between your child's grades for grading on mastery and what our kids know and what they are expected to learn? And here we have a widespread discrepancy in the responses, as well as do teachers communicate how those grades are calculated? So do our parents understand how our kids are getting that grade? Again, here, have you noticed differences in how teachers grade or assess students? So look at the red and the, and the blue combined. And if your child is struggling in a class, do you know what steps are taken to support them academically? Here's family survey comments. They're concerned about grade inflation. They think that there's too many exceptions made to be allowed about work being turned in late.
I have that issue.
With our school.
Constantly, I'm like, why do you have an F? He's like, I just turned in all this work.
Yes, and we get that a lot. We got that quite a few times in comments. This one says it seems to be very instructor-dependent. So they're saying we're seeing some inconsistencies when my child has multiple teachers on their schedule in regards to consistency. Some kids are allowed to submit assignments after receiving feedback, other teachers don't allow that. So even across your schedule, you might be able to redo an assignment in one class, we've already talked about this, and not in another. Or your friend may be able to because they don't have a certain teacher. So that's where it comes back to access for kids.
And this first one, just, I mean, I think we kind of all agree that the SOLs are only a small portion of, you know, measuring what is happening. However, the state is moving to where it's going to be a percentage of their grade. So, you know, when that comes, that will be a change. But, you know, we would love to say that it's not the end-all. But when the state's telling you that it is, it does have to, you know, be an aspect of their grading within the next, what, two years?
This one's about teacher feedback, and then the grading not being timely. That was something else that a lot of times was shared, that a child would turn something in, the grade would be two weeks down the road, right before progress reports or report cards, and then all of a sudden the grade changes. So just timelines in general. I see lots of people nodding, just like, I've experienced that. So we did, so just, this is our process. I just wanted you all to know that we relied, because this is such a divisive topic, we relied very heavily on the data that we had in order to inform these guidelines. So we had two, two-hour meetings with the task force. We used a Trego scan, which we just showed you what the flow looks like. You have to state the situation, you have to clarify, then you have to assess it using a high, medium, or low-based rate based on the seriousness, urgency, and growth over time. And then that tells you what you should prioritize. So that really helped us in terms of next steps and what we really needed to focus on. And that also informed our activities with the task force at our second session. So that was, that really helped us to just plan. And then we synthesized our themes that had multiple high ratings, and then we worked through that with the task force. And we asked them to, to give us two suggestions in regards to their particular theme before they left. And that's the last time that we, we met with the task force.
And those of you that haven't heard too much about us using like the Trego tools or anything, it's a way to kind of take the human aspect out of decision-making and conversations. It was more of just looking at data, looking at the feedback, and allows us to kind of have a way to, oh, yeah.
I was called show, if it'll let me.
Probably won't, because you have signed in.
Well, I signed in, okay, sorry, guys. But if you would like to, there's an example in the session one, and you can see what, what the Trego tool looks like.
And it just allowed the, the committee, one, to have their own kind of input. And then when we started to do the, you know, what level of urgency is a high, medium, or low, it really, even though Jen and I could have said here, four, these are the four topics that we're going to tackle, allowing the entire group to have input on that allowed for those groups to just organically happen. And we knew that they were issues, but in terms of how high, in terms of urgency and growth and seriousness, that can kind of be debatable, but when it's overwhelmingly there through a scan, it just comes out as like, oh, yeah, that makes sense. And, and that kind of guided our conversations and group work in our second meeting.
This is just synthesizing. These were the, these were the themes that we came out with and the response in regards to what you see in the supporting documents.
We could have had ten meetings.
We could have.
I mean, like, just going into a lot of this, you know, you can go back and forth to Brian's point. You know, not everyone is going to have everything laid out to where it's going to make them happy. I do think that focusing on it being best for students, and as you saw the comments, best for our families. I mean, I've got four kids, I've got one in high school, going into high school intermediate, and even the conversations that I'm having with my kids is not the same class to class. And, you know, so, and I, we use those real-life, and in the groups, each had real-life scenarios to where they're like, yeah, but that doesn't happen in this class and this. So they all, even though they may not be a hundred percent happy with what the decisions are, they know, they felt it in each group, that we need some form of consistency so we can all have the same conversations to say, is this what is the best practice? And if we're all saying something different, we can't even determine what is the best practice.
And we did work through the survey to identify the issues before we moved on to the Trego tool. So when you see that, those were the common themes in the survey and what our staff said, these are the things that need to be addressed. So that's just so you know how we identify those. Okay, so a couple of things we've already talked about, but I wanna clarify. The total points versus the weighted grades. This is definitely an issue that we are experiencing in both of our buildings. And I just wanna explain the difference to you all because this is something we will have to monitor this year. So when you're talking total points, you're talking about a hundred-point scale, okay? So essentially, we have some teachers that are using total points. So they might make an assignment worth two hundred points because it's a really big assignment versus other point, you know, other point totals for smaller assignments. So they are essentially weighting their grade, but through the total point system, if that makes sense. So what, what's happening is unintentionally, we are either inflating a student's grades or penalizing a student. Because unintentionally, they are making, making assignments worth different amounts, okay? Without consideration to the, to the overall weight and impact to the grade. So when we talk about weighted grades, that is when you assign a certain percentage. So everything would be out of a hundred points. So let's say a summative assessment, which is like a test, ninety-eight percent, okay? We would put, take all of those summative assessments, and we would weight them a certain percentage of the grade. I just want everybody to be clear on what that means and what that looks like because we had a lot of people, even with the task force, say, well, we're gonna go total points. But if you looked at our grading guidelines, we weighed, we weighted the grades, okay? So I just, I think there's a lot of misconception over what those mean. So we just wanted to make sure it was very clear to you all, because we're gonna be talking about this a little more throughout the year, what, what the difference is.
I'm team weighted grades all the way. I don't understand total point. I don't.
But you'll see that the flexibility is what really sells you to, more customizable. We talked about to reflect learning priorities, and we talked a little bit about that tonight, the importance of that. But also requires consistent category use. So if we get your all's support on this, we would certainly work with Mr. McBride in the technology department to ensure that all grade books are set up for our teachers, if we are able to do that, so that it just reduces margin of error.
Well, Canvas makes that really, yeah.
So we'll, we'll take care of that on the front end, so then we don't have people going into their own grade books and inadvertently, you know, that can happen, so. And then this is the other big controversy. And, and I'll be honest, when Jake and I developed the guidelines before we shared them with you all, we sent them out to the task force, and we said, here's what the data and the activity shared. So we've developed these, can you send us feedback before we share it with the school board? And we got twelve responses, and six percent of them liked it or loved it, and, or sorry, fifty percent of them liked it or loved it, and then fifty percent of them thought it needed revision. That is exactly what I would expect, just based on what we talked about tonight. But this is a big, this was a big topic in the revision, what they suggested for revision, is the minimum grade or floor policy. And just keep in mind that Loudoun County Public Schools recently adopted these, a guideline that has a fifty percent floor. And the reason for that is it's really difficult to come back from a zero. And we're gonna show you statistically what that looks like on the next slide. But I think it's also really important for the board to remember, a fifty percent is an F. So it shows that you don't know, you have a mastered content in a class, okay? But it's possible to come back from it if you were just having a bad day. Or if something, you know, if something's occurring that maybe you do need to reteach, you know? So just wanted you all to know that this is, this is definitely an area that we don't have, you know, we don't have consensus on. But the staff survey and the activities that we did with the task force did lead us to believe that this was the right way to go for the pilot. And so it all, it just, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't know, next slide, I just played.
Okay, I'll go to it.
But I mean, yeah, like, if you're not doing any of your homework, or any of your work, sorry, not homework, but you're not doing any of your work, so you're at, you're at the zero, right? You didn't do anything in, for now. But if you're not doing any good, it's a fifty percent, still.
It's a F.
Right.
Correct. And in this slide, Mike will show you, if you get a zero, calculate, so you're a good student, ninety, eighty-five, ninety-two, and you get a zero, you've got the sixty-six point eight, which is a D. If we give you a fifty, I just want, we wanted to show you all that it's not, you still have a C. It's not like it has made you a B student, or, you know, jumped you up to a certainly proficient student by any means. But just, it does have a disproportionate impact on a student's grade, that zero does. So, I mean, it's like a bit of a jump there, so.
I think the rub is in, I don't wanna go down this route, but in a capitalist society, giving somebody for doing, something for doing nothing, it hurts a lot of people mentally to get there. And so then the other option, or, or other approach to this would be, all right, well, then just do away with the one-hundred-point scale altogether and start with a fifty-point scale, where you don't turn anything in, you get a zero. You do enough to get a D, you get ten, and so on and so forth. But then people love one-hundred percent, so.
And, and, well, we may, we may investigate that by the time this is all said and done, truly.
No, it, and, you know, it, like Jen said, you know, Loudoun, a number of counties are using the fifty because really it's still, like, if you're looking at a hundred-point scale, like a literal scale, fifty percent of it is failing as opposed to the other half of it, right? And so when we're looking, when we're still, we still want proficiency, and a fifty is still failing, right? But when we have, I mean, there will be students that do not do work, right? But at the same time, to one of the comments that was earlier, we'll have those students also pass SOLs. No problem.
We have that.
And so if they get a few zeros that just taint their scores early on, that's very difficult to come back from.
It really.
As opposed to when there's a fifty, and it takes maybe a couple more conversations and a contact with the parents saying, I need him to turn in the work because I know he can do it. And that's a whole lot different than, you can't do anything right now because you've got so many zeros.
And this is not a new problem. I mean, teachers for decades, if not longer, have been like, okay, when the grading, when the report cards are due, I'll drop your lowest grade. Or there's always been bandages to an imperfect system, so.
And I think, and to keep in mind too, with the amount of time a student has to make up work, if you looked in our guideline, there are, we do have pretty specific notifications to students to let them know that they have, they need to make up work, and then after the two weeks, it would then become a fifty. So it can be a zero in those two weeks, and then maybe replace it at the end of the two weeks. But we want, we want students to be held accountable and for teachers to work with them and to remind them that the work is due, you know, because we do want, as we mentioned earlier, to produce productive citizens in sight. However, there might be scenarios where they don't turn something in after two weeks, so, both sides. Okay, so here's just the considerations. We've already talked about traditional zero, fifty percent floor, and then if student receives, this is incomplete and recovery required. So a student receives an incomplete or missing until the work is made up, a permanent grade until resolved, we talked about that as well. And then the tiered recovery model as well. So a student can get a zero, but can earn up to fifty percent or seventy percent after minimal effort.
But that even still isn't perfect.
Correct, and you can see the pros and the cons. These are just considerations that we talked about, so you all could see, and you could have it moving forward.
It's really why a number of years ago, we went to standards-based K-4. I mean, when, when you have third graders getting Ds and Fs when they can't read yet. I mean, and that's kind of where, when a standards-based approach shows mastery or growth towards mastery, and it just, it does a better job at just saying where students are instead of what they've turned in, right? It's actually what they've mastered, what they know, what they've been able to show that they know, as opposed to turning in things or not studying. And I mean, obviously, it's different in high school, but it just shows how complex it can be.
And so we've said from the beginning, we're not gonna take something like this on without monitoring it in terms of effectiveness, because it will take school-building leadership as well to just ensure that our PLCs are working together to develop assignments, and we have a similar number of assignments and all those things. So we've developed a PLC check-in form at the school level. We've developed a building administrator review so that they can monitor as well. And then, of course, Jake and I will continue to provide division oversight as well at the end of each quarter. So for us to review and just to make sure that we're consistent in our schools, which was the goal of the task force and what a lot of our teachers ask for. So just work, and we will work closely with the principals to ensure they have appropriate, we want them to leave that in our buildings, but that they have appropriate professional development for both presentations and resources as we go through this process this year. And then this is just next step. We told the task force, and you'll see that in session two, if you take a look at that at some point, we're gonna collect a lot of data this year. That includes teacher surveys, parent surveys, and student surveys. We're gonna include students as well. And we will meet with the task force every time we have a data collection. So you'll see those at the end of quarter one and three for staff, and then for families and students at the end of semester one and semester two. So we do anticipate we will meet with the task force four times next year. And then, of course, present to you all a year from now what we will implement the following year. So just wanted you all to know, we've already shared that with them. We plan to give you all updates at the second meeting in January and at the second meeting in June. And the reason for that is we will have relevant data at that point to share with you all the success of the current pilot.
Total success. So just to begin, you're not asking me to do anything.
We're not asking you to do anything. This is a pilot, so we will, you know, we will be monitoring it through, through next year.
And a lot of it, you know, when you go back through all of the comments, it, it, all of these practices are not because we have more teaching, right? And so, you know, it, it's just that there has not been a, a consistent expectation for them. And so they've been kind of doing whatever they felt was going to be best. And so I think, you know, and that was clear throughout the comments, it's like, just tell me what to do, right? Just give me some things so I know what to do. And, you know, with it being a difficult topic, taking it on this way, I think, one, it allows for the PLC to kind of show like, this is what's working with our group, this is what's not. Administrators being able to say, this is what's working with, for me as a principal, and what's not. And then at the division level, what is working and what's not, so we can make decisions to kind of guide for next year, and always focusing on what's best for our students. Do they know their grades? Do they know why they're being successful? Do they know, you know, and I mean, you all know, there's nothing more frustrating to be like, so what, why'd you get this grade now? Or why did this grade just show up and it was?
To that point, because this is. To that point, because this is a huge conversation at the university level as well, and a lot of educators that teach at that level are engaging in like ungrading, or I'm going to toy around with something a colleague of mine uses to success, which is like giving projects and different assignments out, and then spelling it out to them. If you want an A on this, this is what you have to turn in. If you want a B on this, turn in this. If you want a C on this, turn in this. And that gets to that part of, well, why did you get a C on that project that you turned in? If the student has that knowledge going in, well, it's because I only did this level of work. That, that tends to be a lot more work on the teacher.
Sure, upfront.
But if we're trying to get to that place of transparency and, and ownership and accountability on the part of the students, it's something I'm going to toy around with myself next semester. I'm not saying I'm in love with it yet, because I haven't done it, but I do like the idea of like, hey Ben, you want an A? This is what you got to do. And then when you come see me about your grade, I'll say, well, this is what you turned in, and I told you, if you wanted an A, you had to do this. I don't see this in this project that you turned in. What else?
Yeah.
So Ben, do you have something to add? Are you going to say something?
No.
He just failed my class.
My job, we grade people, we grade people over here, but we grade them that way, this is what a G back from looks like, this is what met expectations looks like, and this is what exceeded expectations. But anyway, that sort of works, and there's, that's where it's jacked it sometimes. I, my original question was going to be, and I don't know how hard this is, but like just to pull a sample size in the first semester and say, based on the single zero, this is what it was like based on the 50, because I know it would be hard to go back and say, well, they got a 50 because they only got half of them right, or they got a 50 because they turned something in, like it might be tricky.
Right, we're going to monitor that, that, intentionally going to monitor that.
We, so, in, in the guidelines, it allows for the PLC to kind of put a zero in there, saying, you know, just to show, no, it's not there, you know, either you haven't done it, or, you know, for whatever reason. And so in those checkpoints, it's saying as a PLC, like, how many zeros do you have? You know, and just being able to say, I, I've got a lot of zeros, right? Because, and what I think has happened over time is that the kids will play the game in terms of, oh, well, I don't, I, I know, my, my teacher lets me make this up in the last week of school, right? So I won't do any of the assignments, but at the last week, I'll just.
They'll always find a way. If they want to, they'll always.
What does PLC stand?
Personal Learning Community.
Okay.
So you'll see in the manuals that we put together, just some clarity around retakes, the weight, it's different for your CTE courses versus your electives courses versus your core classes, and the reasons for that, Melissa, you spoke to it earlier, just in regards to when the participation matters, and we certainly don't want them consistently grading participation in core subjects. So you'll see some differences in the manual, because we did recognize that all classes aren't the same. Anything else that we did, we did specify late work too. Our staff asked for just some consistent guidelines around late work and what that looks like, you'll see that as well. Anything else specifically in the guidelines?
Retakes for some of the assessments.
Oh, yes.
So there was a discrepancy in terms of, you know, I could, I could fail this test in this classroom, and I would be able to retake it and get up to like a 90, whereas if I got an 80, I can't retake it, but I'd love to have a 90, right? And so that was all over the place too. And again, I'm probably, you know, I'm hearing it from my daughter, you know, and so it's like, yeah, but I can retake the test. You're like, what? And so we kind of limited that to say, across the board, if a student fails the summative assign, assessment, which is 60% of a grade, that they can retake it and get up to a 70. And so, and that's across the board. So it's a proficiency level, and what I, and going back to it on our guidelines, the very first line is, we want mastery of the content, right? And so it's not playing the homework game, it's not playing the grading game, it's mastering content. And for me, a 70 says, I'm proficient, right? It may not be at that A level, but I'm proficient, I'm showing proficiency. So if I did bomb a test, I have an option to get a 70, whereas if I got a 70, I got a 70, right? And so it does put on a little bit of accountability for students to say, you got to study for the test, because as far as you're going to go is a 70. Instead of having it just be all over the place to where I can retake, I'll bomb it today so I can get an 85 tomorrow, whereas the other kid that tried so hard and got an 84 and can't do it again. And that's where there is some autonomy in that, in the sense of, a teacher can say it, guys, I'm just going to wipe all of those grades, and we're going to redo this because we didn't do well, you know? And that's where teachers being able to see where students are mastering content, that makes that difference. Those are those PLC conversations where they're, you know, did everybody else have kids bombing this test? And that, that's where we want the conversations to be in those groups of teachers, not just, okay, we have two more assignments that we have to give, but more of what is in those assignments that matter, and, and kind of progress students through their coursework.
Just to be clear, the retakes are only on summative assessments. It was very difficult for teachers to monitor when they're giving retakes in formative and on classroom and everything. So because we're saying mastery matters, we're focusing on retakes only on seven, on a summative assessment.
And yet that's still an imperfect approach, because then you're penalizing a kid who bombed a test, but then studied his tail off, got 100% the next time he took it, but all he can really get is a 70, that's not a true reflection of his mastery. So again, this is, there's, it's loose, loose, there's no.
Yeah. Some control over.
Yeah. No, I deal with it all the time.
This is our start.
Yeah. No, I appreciate you guys tackling this. I think uniformity is better than not having uniformity.
A bit drawn with your teacher. Right, that's what was in college, college. Yes. My organic professor was amazing, and then I tutored some of the kids in the other class, and I was like, oh, I would be failing right now. And really, it's just a little bit drawn with your teacher, unfortunately.
All right, any other questions?
I appreciate it, guys.
Okay, we have some future action items to get through. The first one, Mr. Smith, talk to us about the PNC insurance annual approval.
Okay, something a little less, a little less difficult to talk.
We're all riled up now.
I'm just going to put you to sleep with some insurance. Okay, so tonight I bring you just our annual insurance, annual insurance approval. We have two types of insurance that we renew each year annually, and that is our property casualty and our workers' compensation. The property casualty insurance premium increased from 243 to 243,000, 255,000, but our workers' comp went down from 155 to 144. So overall, just a very small increase, $1,140 this year, which if you've dealt with insurance at all, you know that's pretty good. So we're pretty happy with it, and this is budgeted, the PNC insurance is budgeted through my operations budget, and the workers' comp comes out of the human resources budget. So it's funded in the current budget that's been approved, and we'll put it on the consent agenda at the next meeting if there's no arguments against that.
That is, you want to. I do have a question. Where does, and this might be a question for councilors and that, where does DNO, like the coverage fall, like for, you know, administrative and, you know, director level, officer level?
Well, we have, we have educators' legal liability, that covers most of our teachers and that type of stuff.
Right. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I, I'm not exactly sure where, if you're talking about like board coverage, I know it's included in here, it is included in here, we do have board liability coverage.
Or, because I saw, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I saw the educator's liability, and I said, well, where is, you know, if you're an administrator or a, you know, officer of a board, board member level, I don't know whether that's a separate policy, or it didn't seem to clearly fall under the breakdowns.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to them tomorrow and shoot you an email, let you know what it is, let the board chair know as well.
Yeah.
But yeah, I can, I can find out.
Great.
Ben, when he gets back to you, if there's an issue, we want to break this off of the consent agenda for next meeting, let me know.
Yeah. Yeah. And you know, I'm not an expert in this, so it was sort of more of like, hey, this is.
Right, yeah, I, I don't know the entire policy, what's, what every individual coverage distinctly covers, but I can certainly find out.
Thank you.
It's a simple phone call.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, Ms. Buckley, again, for the J-R-O-T-C.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I had one, I had one more question.
Okay, yeah.
And so this might be something that maybe Aaron could weigh in on too, but I, I noticed that there was a certain limit on like cyber-related instances, and I didn't know whether that was just a standard amount, if there's any, you know, because you see like all kinds of crazy stuff happening in regards to cyber, if there's an industry standard recommendation for a level on cyber, I'm assuming we're at that, but I don't, I just wanted to kind of throw that out.
Oh, you want to know what the number is?
I think it was like the middle of it.
Right.
I just, again, I have the policy, I'm trying to be a little.
Sure.
But again, I can find that. But yeah, we do, we do obviously cover cyber attacks, and they recently increased it, actually. In fact, we increased it this year, this past year.
Okay.
And so it is covered, and it is in there.
Right.
It's covered with the exact number that we.
Sure, I, I, that was just something popping on mine, it was like, those seemingly those risks are always increasing, just to make sure that we fell.
They are, and they, the insurance company has worked with them over the last year, yeah, make sure that we have enough coverage to cover.
That's perfect. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Ben.
Yeah, sure. Sorry about that.
So I came in April with Katie Walpart, and we talked about J-R-O-T-C, and then we're back with a formality of showing you all the application that is ready for submission at this point, that is attached here, the supporting documents, you can take, certainly take a look through that. An extensive application that does require us to just prove we have the space and everything needed in order to apply, if we were to be approved, that we can support the programming. One thing that has happened in the interim is we did send a small team to Loudoun County just to take a look at, I think we, it was a Navy J-R-O-T-C program that you saw. Jason was able to go and share a little bit of just about what they saw, they got to see the whole morning in regards to what that looked like, so I'll just let him share with you some takeaways.
Yeah, I had a great visit with Loudoun County, and they have a Navy R-O-T-C. Three instructors, 180 students are participating in the school, about the same size as family. Difference is they do allow students to travel from other schools to that school, so about, I think it was like 50 kids of the 180 were coming from other high schools within Loudoun County. What was most exciting for me was, we got there at 7:30 in the morning, their kid, their school is starting at nine, and you saw about 40 kids already there, they were practicing drill team, they were involved in, had underwater drone program, all of these are competitive too, so they all do competitions among J-R-O-T-Cs in state and the region. So the underwater drone program team was practicing, they had, of course, the drill team, they had a robotics team, they had seven different teams that were competitive and, you know, practicing at 7:30 in the morning. So I got to talk to some of the kids, they were, they were graded 50/50 split, boys and girls, I thought that was, I wasn't expecting that, kind of thought it might trend toward boys, but 50/50 split. And also, like, this, this concern maybe, and I don't know if it's concerned, but like, they're very clear, the kids will articulate very clearly, this is not a recruitment center for the armed forces, it's about leadership development, and, you know, and I say, what are your plans? They didn't necessarily say, well, I'm going to military, like, that's exactly what I'm here for, it's more about leadership development, some will go to the military for sure. But, you know, it was, I was impressed overall, and definitely think it's something, A, we could support. Another thing, one of our biggest questions, and Ed was with me, is on space, right, and like storage space, and how, what are we talking about here? I think we can certainly handle that with our current site, so I didn't leave afraid of that piece of it. Is Loudoun the closest jurisdiction that has? I think there's some in West Virginia, Berkeley County probably has some, if I'm not mistaken, Cole, Cole, right? Yeah, Cole Pepper has, has one.
Okay.
But yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, who was it that, Louisa County, I think, just got one, or? I think they just got one.
I think they just got one too.
So Louisa County, and I don't know how long they were on the wait. So again, this is, this is an application to get on the list. Once we get approval, then we'd have to fund it first of all, and make a decision to execute funding, but this gets us on the list, and then we really have no sense of how long we're looking at, year, two, three, or a long time, I have no idea.
And Bush, Bush, Army.
Any questions or comments for Jen or Jason?
Excited.
Yeah.
Have to.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. This does bring us to the new for closed session. Mr. Burson?
Pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 of West Virginia, motion that the board convene closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, including prospective candidates for employment, and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disappointing or resignation of specific public officers, employees, specifically candidates for instructional slash licensed positions, substitute teacher, and support staff roster, transfers, and resignations.
Motion by Mr. Burson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harris, in discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session.